In other words, you would be able to rescind the resolution and create the office of the city secretary. I would caution the council that it would be in your best interest to diminute the specific authorities that you're giving to the city administrators and managers of the city secretary.
Let me hear your argument. Go ahead, Mr. Alib. Alright. I'm prepared to make a motion. And if it's insufficient and improper, let me know. Motion. I move that we rescind. Resolution 2011-0404 and all other relevant and pertinent resolutions, ordinances, what have you, that attempt to establish the city manager form, the city manager plan as to chapter 20 and chapter 25 for the city of practical. That way, whatever's come before, we're gonna take it. We're gonna go back to being the city secretary. Alright, to reinstate the city secretary.
I would just caution that the action that you're asking to take here is to invalidate any action to create a city manager plan, a form of government. And my position, my opinion to the council is that has not been done. That the appropriate statutory provisions have not been followed to adopt a city manager's plan in form of government. However, you have adopted a resolution that designates individual as the city manager.
I don't think there is an ordinance. And I just wanted to throw it in there just in case. Nobody might find one. Wherever. Okay, now, is my motion appropriate?
They can accept the...
I'm gonna move that we rescind action taken by previous council with the passing of resolution 2011-0404.
Yes.
Just leave it at that.
Yes.
Okay, that's my motion.
And that should... The resolution should be accepted.
The resolution. And this resolution was approved. April 2, 2011. That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
How do we move forward from getting the city manager?
I'm sorry.
How do we move forward from getting the city manager?
It requires an election by the electorate. It requires a city election, basically. If they need...
Patrina.
Yes, sir.
That procedure. The procedure that you're talking about. A problem. To a situation where an election has been held. There's been no election.
Yeah, that's the question you have. That's what he's asking. He means that's about how we can go forward if we're not going to do a city manager. She's explaining to him the procedure.
Yeah, but she said that we had to go through...
It's 20% of the last election we had.
Yeah.
It was when we elected Rachel.
Are you saying that we have to go through an election too?
If you want a city manager type of government as a state, we would have to hold an election. That's what he was asking and she wasn't answering.
And just to give you a quick breakdown of what the requirements are, just so that you're informed on that. It requires a petition filed with the municipal court requesting the mayor to call a special election for the adoption of a city manager plan. The petition must be signed by a number of qualified voters equal to at least 20% of the total number of legally qualified electors voting for mayor at the last preceding municipal election. Within 10 days after the filing of the petition, the mayor has to issue a proclamation calling for a special election. And you have to post notice regarding that election. And the election has to be held on the first authorized uniform election date after the petition and proclamation have been done. And it is, there's very specific ways that have to be ordered on the ballot and such. But generally, you have to receive, the mayor has to receive a petition from 20% of the qualified elected voters in the county, or the city, I'm sorry.
And the election has to be in main?
It would have to be at the first authorized uniform election date, which in this case would be...
Let me interject this. Okay, you're reading from the code, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what's that? There's a provision in our state that the city council cannot initiate that petition.
That is correct.
No, that petition could not come from us. It has to come from the populace.
Yes, yes.
It has to come from the populace.
Section 25.022 of the council vote that lays out the requirements for such.
But it only involves people who voted at the last election, right?
No, it only involves 20% of the number of people that voted at the last election.
If 300 people voted, you gotta have 40 people sign it.
Yeah, it's not necessarily the same voters. It's just tied back to the numbers from the previous election.
Do you have any more questions?
I believe I made a motion.
As you may know, I want to say it.
I will say the motion that we put ahead and... Here, the resolution 2011-0404. That's it. I have a motion, I'm sorry.
Motion made by Commissioner Gordon.
Oh, alright. What is this, what is this doing to Mr. Garcia today?
I thought I was hearing...
Now, what is this doing to Mr. Garcia's positions today?
That's exactly why I caution the council that the appropriate action taken will include some sort of designation as to the responsibility of whatever title you're going to give him under the circumstances.
Well, we'd have to revert or reinstate the position of city secretary.
That could be additional action that took, that the council...
You can take that up, but it didn't.
No, you're actually, it's on the agenda for today.
I'm gonna adjourn tonight.
Yes, you have appropriate wording in the agenda, so you can action if you can after that.
Then the position I named as city manager was invalid.
Correct.
Now, as you have taken this action, you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, that I can think of, all hand employees that are also in limbo. Because if you wrote that I did not have the authority and the city manager position was illegal, then these nine employees are in the vote and basically were hired, as you stated, illegally and they honestly don't have the job. Because, as you say, I didn't have the authority to hire. The underlying is, the action you just took and, Madam Attorney, if you'll correct me, in essence, you've dissolved the position and you've laid me off.
No, no, certainly you don't, no, sir.
I'm asking Attorney. You have taken the action, rescind the office of city manager previous two councils ago, when they hired me, specifically hired me as a city manager.
Do you want to authorize the vote yet?
However, that tells me that I have, this, I mean, you're wrong, Attorney. Tells me that I have essentially, at this point, do not have a position. Is that correct?
No, actually. I believe that action made of Mr. Garcia was to eliminate 14% of those who created the city manager position and reappoint him as a secretary.
However, I was hired as a city manager.
And now you were hired as city secretary and then it changed to city manager because the title was not approved of.
On a clarifying point, just to make sure that there's no misunderstanding. I am very clear on the point that Mr. Garcia did not have the authority to hire the police chief or any officers. I did not say that he did not have the authority to hire and fire other employees. That's what Mr. Garcia said. I can't find anything, any sort of statutory guidance that would delegate that authority specifically to the mayor or council, but for the chief of police position. Okay, I just wanna make sure that Mr. Garcia will hear.
So everyone has their job.
Okay, here's a question. My answer, here's a question I have with the city council. Mr. Garcia. What about, what about positions? Is the city, is the city council being authorized to assign positions with certain pay or not? Or is that something we're gonna have to discuss next week?
As far as this is concerned, that's...
We will now go to number 12. Consider discuss act on the validity of the position of the chief of police based on the lack of council approval.
Can you give us a moment, please? That's... It's not specific under the authorities delegated to the city manager under the previously adopted now we're sending the resolution. That was one of the authorities that you could not delegate to him. And specifically to the police department or the office of police chief. In other words, the council was among the sole discretion to exercise it or to appoint and set the qualifications of a police officer in the police department.
Over here, the votes said we have the right to change. Okay, so let's change.
I'd like to go to executive session.
Yes, ma'am.
It is 7:52 and we will...
Why don't we go on to the first section?
We're in August 2015, so 7:52, we're going to executive session.
We have the authority to say no. We want to...
This time, ma'am, I think it's inappropriate to address this issue directly to the chief.
I don't know what, at this point, I don't know what to do. I mean, you gotta discuss nullifying a position, is that correct?
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
We're actually discussing item... Let me respond. And I, I have no authority. Mr. Garcia, do you place this item on the agenda? Can you explain to us why you have this item posted? Did you request this item on the agenda?
There's a call for you.
It's number 1, no action. No, that's what... And we're at number 12. To explain why you put this. Yes, sir.
Okay. I placed the sign on the agenda that says, "Consider act on the validity or legality of the position of chief of police based on the lack of council approval." This is not based on the forms. It's not based on need. It is a procedural act. It is a, in my opinion, a violation of the hiring process that's outlined in our policy manual. Number 1, the position was never activated. Number 2, I questioned the, I questioned the interview. Oh, and I'm not saying we get the best qualified person. But how can you find the best qualified person if you don't hire them? If somebody can answer that question for me? Now, because, I don't say...
I can answer it.
I'm not finished.
Well, you're asking...
I'm not finished, I'm still talking. I'm still talking. I'll let you talk a bit. Because, as we have already established, the city manager, with Mr. Garcia, in actuality, was not a full-fledged city manager in accordance with the science with chapter 25 of the local government code. And because he was not elected, because we did not go through the election process, he did not have sovereign functions, statutory duties to hire. It's got nothing to do with this man of here other than the position. What we're talking about is procedure. I believe that the position should have been brought, at least brought to the council's attention for approval. Now, that is a selection. That is a position that's specifically stated in the statute. And I have to look through my book and find it. But there are certain positions that are inherent in a general law type of form of government. Number 1 being the city secretary. The council hires the city secretary. Number 2, the city attorney. The council hires the city attorney. Number 3, an engineer, if we have one. The council hires the engineer. Number 4, a tax exception collector, if we have one. And finally, a marshal, as described in the code, or the chief of police. Now, in Mr. Morales's email, which I documented in my letter, clearly states that that is a responsibility reserved solely for the council. The council cannot delegate that to anyone. If we do, we are in violation of the law. And I believe we've already discussed that.
Mr. Morales, so where does Mr. Chambers stand now?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Because...
That's basically what he's trying to ask.
Where do we stand with Mr. Chambers at this point?
Because again, when we passed that resolution, we were going to... Mr. Morales was guiding us.
Again, yeah. So how would you fix it?
The appropriate way to fix it is to either ratify the conduct of hiring Mr. Chambers, which you can't do, that's meeting, because your agenda's not working to do that. But if you want to keep him in his position, that if you can ratify his hiring through the city manager's office. And so the council can sort of retroactively make the action that Mr. Garcia took valid by appropriate city council means. But again, we're forced to do constraints of the way that he mentioned it was burdened. And so all of this, the subject of discussion today is consideration discussion, action on the validity or legality of the position of chief of police based on lack of council approval. I think that that's what we've been establishing here. And then consider, discuss and act nullifying the position of chief of police. It wasn't worded and affirmed to allow the council to establish the position. The only considered action worded in agenda was to nullify the chief of police position.
Well, to nullify, nullify means to terminate, to dissolve.
Correct.
Whether that's a term used, to nullify, to dissolve the position background. Everywhere the 14th, you know, as well, when the previous chief of police lost his job, the position was dissolved, vote dissolved.
The police department was dissolved.
Which, which, which means, same thing. Nothing.
The police department.
Correct.
And now, what I would need to establish is whether or not the council should have approved, not the question that we have to answer. Should the council have approved?
I think my suggestion, recommendation, and opinion about was yes.
Okay, and you have the answer right there. Alright, so, you've just answered the question for me. Therefore, the position is invalid. The hiring was invalid.
Well, Joe, Joe, wait a minute, wait a minute. In true honesty, in true honesty, when Mr. Chambers was mentioned to us, we were in the council and in a meeting, we were in the workshop. And Mr. Chambers was mentioned to us and nobody said anything different.
I did. I asked why we had dissolved the department.
That's right, correct.
I did ask. And it was ignored. Okay, so, I'm sorry, but I thought also, and I could be wrong. I haven't read every manual. But I thought we could not hire during the workshop. So I did not approve. I did not approve.
The adoption of a budget that had been adopted, including the position of chief of police?
Patrina, do you agree with me or do you disagree with me?
Did you never finish speaking, Mr. Garcia? You keep on interrupting her. She doesn't even finish speaking, you keep on interrupting her. She will be explaining, she will explain...
Patrina, speak up. I'm trying, I'm actually a pretty loud person, so I'm trying.
I can hear you now.
Here, okay, I'll get real close here for you.
There you go.
The, the adoption of a budget creating, basically, the department, in other words, when the council took the action to adopt the budget and make the appropriate budgetary designations for the police department, if that has already been done, would probably provide to a bridge to get to where you wanna be as far as keeping in this position. But I would suggest that you go ahead and at the next available meeting, ratify or do your own action to keep him in his position if that's what the council desires.
I'm not disputing the budget, okay? The budget is not the issue.
Right.
It would include it in the budget, I don't have spoken.
Mr. Garcia...
But irrespective of whether it would include it in the budget or not, when this person or any person is to be hired, it needs to be approved by the governing body. Irrespective of the position or who the person is, that has nothing to do with it.
I don't agree with you.
Well, that's weird.
No, it's, that's not, and that's what I'm trying to make sure, make clear to the council. With respect to your police officers and your chief of police position, that is correct. With respect to all other hiring and firing decisions...
I'm talking about other, I'm talking about this one, okay?
But what you said was, any hiring and firing, that's not correct.
Alright, well, let me, let me, my comment, let me rephrase what I said, okay? Specifically citing this position.
Yes.
Since this is statutory, again, to establish that the council are reapplying and re-organize the position if we choose to vote.
The only thing that you can do at tonight's meeting, the only thing that's worded in the agenda to do is to nullify.
Well, we've already established and you, you've concurred with me. That is invalid, guys.
Correct.
And that's all I wanted to hear. So, that's all I need to hear on that. Now, we can go on to the next item of business, which is, consider act, consider discuss act nullifying the position of chief of police. We've already established that it was an invalid hire. Now, we need to decide what are we gonna do with it?
Mr. Garcia, we do this thing on the record, as number 12, there is no action being taken before you continue to jump to the next item. We need to definitely, we need to run down to number 12, no items taken. No actions taken, no actions taken, and they're gonna be moved into number 13.
No, no actions taken, no.
And that's number 13, is consider discuss act nullifying the position of the chief of police.
Again, I would just call council, I would caution the council to act within parameters of your board agenda.
Right. Mr. Garcia, Mr. Chambers was hired after the budget was resolved, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. At the same, at the same meeting when the budget was, was in fact approved, the introduction was made of the chief Chambers, the position of police chief. And going back to what Ms. Munoz said, the, there was no action taken that there was discussion when we were in the budget meeting that the, the position of chief of police would be reinstated into the budget. I don't recall which council member asked me, who do you have in mind or what do you plan to do? I said, I have, I had at that time, in my possession, four applications for the position of police chief. During the process of candidate meeting, I had two of those individuals remove their candidacy or their application for that position. Okay? The, the two individuals that were involved, one is Mr. Chambers, the other individual, I did not call because in checking the details, he was not a certified police officer. And no one had carried his commission, so he had lost his commission. Not that he did anything wrong, he just, no one had carried his commission and it no longer was out. So he was not a qualified candidate. So that's when Mr. Chambers came in, in the meeting, as I stated before, in the budget meeting, and in fact was approved. Mr. Chambers was at that meeting. As a matter of fact, the council, to go back to the minutes, the council congratulated him on the position of police chief in voting. Patrina, I have a question for you.
Patrina, can you tell me if I am wording this incorrectly?
Alright.
Um, I'm gonna make a motion to table this line item till next week, so we can get a proper wording, so we can ratify the position or, and or nullify the position if the council chooses that to leave Mr. Chambers who he is until next week. Is that correct?
That's right.
Can I ask a question? When, when do I get to speak? Will it be next week at their meeting or...
You can speak now to chairman of the meeting.
Well, no, I mean, I don't need to speak now. I would like to speak before y'all actually sit down to make a statement.
If you want to speak now, you can before we put it on the agenda.
It's completely up to y'all. Let me just go ahead and, and get it out of the way then, that way y'all have a meeting and call me and I don't know what you want me to do. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Garcia, but I disagree with you. Okay? You made the statement that it was nothing personal. You made the statement that it had nothing to do with me. Yet on August 8, 2013, at 7:50 p.m., you called the sheriff's office and complained that I was stalking their patrons because I patrolled Walmart.
That is true.
Okay, so I believe there is a personal issue there if you would make that statement.
I'm, I'm...
So, my patrolling a, what I deem a high crime or a necessary enforcement area, your patrons, um, there's no, absolutely no basis to it. If you look at stalking...
That's not relevant to the issue.
Well, it's not really...
We're not talking about your performance, we're talking about the hiring process.
And I appreciate that...
You have nothing to do with what you've done.
I appreciate what you're saying, but I've tried to get done, that's all.
I'm afraid that people have come to me about you. I'm not gonna listen to them. You can, you can say whatever you want, I'll listen to you, but that's, that's it.
Okay, then please listen to me. I believe there is an issue there, a personal issue. I also was made aware that Ms. Munoz made a comment that she was concerned about me being hired. She was more afraid of what I would do with, to a family member of hers. Can you comment on that?
No, sir. I said I was concerned from the very beginning because they had dissolved the department. That was what I said.
Okay.
Listen, man, we're not on trial here. Somebody turn me on a trial.
You know what, you're not helping that by doing this.
Actually...
Excuse me, excuse me. Okay, okay, that's...
But not a tax payer.
We're going to...
I think you need to...
We're going to...
Yes, please.
Yes. Mr. Hernandez, standing motion on the table. Why have you said...
I second your...
Okay, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Garcia, you wanted to stop it because of that. Okay.
I second that motion, just because I know that we do benefit from this.
I see you.
We have a lot of kids in our community and I want to see them protected. See the chief of police, the children, that I just like the sheriff's pride. I want to keep this position. I second this.
I have a second to table the motion until further meeting for next week. A motion made by Hernandez and second by Rodriguez.
I, I'm sorry, do you repeat the motion?
It was to table the motion.
Table the motion until the next meeting to include ratifying the position.
The motion to return for the year, is that...
Yes, please.
It's a major...
Chief.
Oh. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, sir?
All in.
In this, okay, all in favor, sir, Mr. Garcia, yes, sir. I can table it.
The council is down, so it's not very hard.
So there's, no action.
I have fourteen and fifteen are now unemployed.
No action, that's true. So will be no action taken on both of the fifteen.
Would you like to give a comment on that, President, or your agenda?
You have one request on the agenda?
We're on, uh, we're on that.
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Yeah, there's no motion, no, no action being taken since we no longer have a city manager.
No action taken on thirteen, what about fourteen?
No, thirteen was tabled.
Yeah, how about fourteen?
Fourteen, there'll be no action since we no longer have a city manager.
Oh, okay.
Then, I'm sorry, same as fifteen.
All right.
So, so when we have this next meeting, we didn't also discuss, uh, pay rates?
That would be in the budget, look, yes, when you ratify, that's not, if you just have a lawsuit.
If, if you're going to amend the budget, uh, if the pay rates are, are part of your budget, then you have to follow the appropriate actions.
So we need to do it all together in the meeting.
How we can comply?
Um, I don't know, fourteen, the manager was part of the special, has a warrant. No, four, no action going down. So we go down to item seventeen, which is the reference. Motion by Hernandez, second, second by this one, Mr. Garcia.
Do you have a, for your?
It was in one hand.
Well, I, I would like to, I would like to, to raise my speaker.
For the record, I'd like the council to, to, uh, be aware, to some, somebody who are new to the council, be aware of some accomplishments that the city has done. This dates back from March 3, 2008, to March 13, 2013. Negotiated a contract with ADP to reduce the city electric rate from forty-four cents to two and a half, twenty-two and a half cents. Negotiated a cost reduction on the natural gas that we pay by diverting the gas that we were getting from Louisiana in name of that transportation and demanding that we, we fed out the Houston Deepwater Channel. That was quite a savings, reducing the cost of replacing the gas, gas lines that we had been cited for by the Rural Commission. At the time of my employment, the city was paying contractor a thousand dollars a day to replace these, uh, gas lines. That was probably equating about twelve thousand five hundred dollars a month to a contractor. I was given the authority to bring this in-house, which I did. Me at one time had a gas loss of sixty-eight percent. We were fixing to get fined five thousand dollars a day. In a mere six months after I got the operation into the office, into the city, our gas loss was point eight percent. The last inspection we had last year was point zero zero two percent. With that as an accomplishment. I secured a ten thousand dollar grant for the city, purchase a city bailer, uh, a cardboard bailer. We currently bail approximately forty tons of cardboard. The going rate for cardboard directly to the mill is a hundred and eighty-eight dollars a ton. That is an accomplishment. Before, we were paying ground, ground recycling five cents a pound to take the cardboard away from the city. I secured a twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollar grant for planning. With that grant, we re-surveyed the city from Coffin Street across to Fulton. We produced digital maps. We now have monuments that show exactly where the property lines were. I always make the comment that back then, you bought a piece of property, you dug a hole with your heel, and that was the corner of your property, you walked it off. And that's what happened over there. We had some areas that were complete, people taking up half of people's lots. I secured an energy grant of ten thousand dollars, which we replaced the air conditioning upstairs and put insulation up on, on the city hall roof that was already deep, didn't cost us a dime. I negotiated interlocal agreement with King County Fire Protection. At the time of my hiring, the city was paying five thousand dollars every six months to the county for fire protection. And the way I did that was I am currently licensed as a civic system inspector. I perform that, uh, through this interlocal agreement with this, with the county and the city, and the city gets free fire service. I get no money out of it. I cannot draw wage from two public entities. So, any, any benefits of me doing that position comes to the city, I get nothing out of it. I was instrumental in giving a hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and two dollars, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-one cents of tech dot funds to pay the streets around the city and school campus. Also, we're able to secure donations for additional streets to be paved. I was instrumental in giving a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to replace the water lines that had been in the ground since nineteen twenty-eight. In most, the last three years, I've been able and been instrumental in securing grants to have the citywide, countywide cleanup that all of the citizens have benefited from. Through working with the county, we were able to get surplus materials to use to build a golf cart path that now runs from Highway ninety to Spring Street and make it easier for citizens to go back and forth in that golf cart. I had lobbied with Tux Tech Stop for street improvements on Route one sixty-six, Spring Street, and Hand Street. We secured grant funding to pave Beaumont Street. As I mentioned before, I teamed up with the county and got some donations to pay Fulton, Ford, and Edris Street. And just recently, under maybe council awareness, I renegotiated with the power suppliers to get the lowest possible rate for electricity. We went from twenty-two and a half cents, we now pay point zero five four cents per ton of water. I contracted, I brought to the council, and negotiated with TriStar to do a utility rate audit to all our suppliers that we pay, gas and electricity. To date, we have received five thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-six cents in refunds just on the electric company. They're now in the process of auditing West Texas Gas. Going back to when I was first hired, when the, within the six months that I was hired, we paid off a twelve thousand dollar bill that was owed to TML that had gone through two councils. So, it was a pageant. I have represented the city as board of directors on the Middle Rio Brand Development Council. I am on the Homeland Security Committee, the Economic Development Committee, I'm the vice chair of the Criminal Justice Committee, I chair the Solid Waste Committee, I chair the Two One One Committee, and I'm vice chair of the Nine One One Committee. Those are accomplishments that I felt the councilmen talked to you here about. You there, if you were there, one more.
What about the streets not being paved? What about the streets?
Yeah, where is the money? That's a damn good question.
Yeah.
Damn good question, what is about, where is the water money?
Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Okay, you get my next question, my English? One more.
If, what I. If you look at tonight's agenda, agenda, ninety-nine percent of the agenda was negative. We're going back, revisiting various issues that the city is taking up. It's very apparent to me.
Mr. Garcia.
No.
They don't need to be judged.
It's very apparent to me that many others that since the last election, there have been council members, in this case, voting majority, that are focused on one thing only, and that is to get rid of me. One council member, he's a user, user, has a campaign promise to the citizens, that the first action they would take was to get rid of me as soon as possible. I have been a person of integrity, I've always been honest, it's been, it was instilled in me by my parents. My dad, with only an eighth grade education, his profession was a sheepherder and a laborer, but yet he could walk into the first state bank of Braggville and get a loan by simply signing his name. That's integrity, that's where I learned. My mom, she taught me always to believe in Almighty God, no matter what, no matter what is happening, have faith in him, he will see you through the worst of times. I tell you this because here, lately, in several occasions in this exact forum, I've had at least three council members question my integrity, both publicly and through private comments and in public places, including the post office. I cannot continue to do my job under these high school conditions. So at this time, I will let the council know, this is my last council meeting. I will be at City Hall at eight o'clock in the morning to return all city property and get a receipt for it. I would like to thank all of those that have stood by me. Understand one thing, I'm not going away to hide it. I still believe in this community, and I will find other ways to help build this community to a place where people want to live and work. Mayor, I thank you for allowing me to say that.
No, you're good.
Uh, more?
Yes. Second?
Uh, second.
Um, okay. Mr. Garcia's second bail, all in favor, please.
For, for all of us, right?
Yes, I represent the council.
Including, uh, the city manager.
I do not represent.
Why do we not, why do we not get, uh, CC knowledge information? Is this having legal rights?
Um, in the context of attorney-client communications, uh, it's best to keep it because anything that is correspondent between either individual council member or the city manager, that we have public information, uh, this obviously was going to the news organization, so it's public, I mean, and I wasn't providing to you.
So are you saying you will CC those, right?
Okay, that's what, I would be happy to, it's not any problem for us to do that.
I mean, we are a council, we're not individuals.
Generally speaking, what we do is we provide the city manager with these sort of correspondence and then request that he distribute to the council, but if we need to be sending that directly to the council from our office, that's something that definitely we can do. I'll get the city manager to make sure that you have the appropriate address.
Well, you have, you have my address, I guarantee you, I've communicated with Mr. Morales a lot.
Yes.
He had my address, uh, our property's got Joe's address.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if these other personnel want to give their address or even address, it should be public, anybody in the county should give it up, citizen health.
I don't have, that's, that's not an issue, I would be happy to do that, and that doesn't really, uh, it is not anything different for us to do.
Okay, I would, I would, but can't. No, no. Now, on the same token, once I get information from you, I can't give it to, uh, the news agency, right?
It would not be suggested it is an attorney-client privilege communication, because it is.
Mr. Garcia, you're not to do it overkill, but the reason I'm wanted, but I was here. I have some very specific questions for you.
Maybe that's why Mr. Morales sent me instead, I'm just kidding. Mr. Morales did have. Prior to the, uh, prior to Mr. Morales receiving notice of the meeting, he had some previously, I know, he had some previously scheduled deposition, and he's not able to make it.
I have a lot of people out there that I'm gonna pretend, that have been made with questions, I've done a lot of research, I've done a lot of reading, uh, I've done a lot of hours putting all this together.
I cannot into the psyche of any Morales and tell you why he may have made a recommendation like he did, but I can tell you based on the research that I have done, and these portions of the resolution are inappropriate and they were not authorized by statute to be done, so.
Let me tell you, one I wanted to hear, okay? You have a copy, you have a copy in April seven, seven, two thousand and eleven minutes. Now, in those minutes, I have identified about fifteen instances, when we were told what appears to be information that's contrary to what we've been saying today and exchanging. Okay? I've got a number, you can give a copy of that to Mr. Morales. I hope that at some point in time in the future, I will have the opportunity to question him about these things, because these are statements that he made, for example. Look on page one, the Matias willing wanted to further clarify that the city might have delivered the city manager's plan in two thousand and five. See, I said that was correct. Eddie, Eddie Morales interjected, added that he has a letter dated since July fourteenth and so on. Now, I don't have to see that letter. Okay, there, there were fifteen, and I won't go into it, because that's an overkill, he's not here, and I, I don't want to foot cheek to it, the chief gave him a copy of this, and at some point in time.
and at some point in time, I want him to answer some questions regarding statements that he made regarding the form of government that we are actually under. Now, there's been a lot of confusion and I'm not ready to draw a conclusion at this very moment. But I would say, based on what I heard, based on what I researched, based on what I've read, that some of that confusion may be coming from him. But I'm not gonna draw that conclusion. I say let. I would like for him to get that, that to him. Well, we'll discuss it.
Okay. If you, for, for the discussion item on this particular issue, if you want to discuss it with Eddie, just give us a little bit more notice, I think, and, and he will make room and schedule to be here.
Why did he be here?
He had previously scheduled depositions and he.
Oh, deposition, word.
Yes, it was.